Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of June 9, 2015. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the floral arrangement they always provide for our meetings. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Leslie Hadamia, would you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one announcement. The San Bruno City Council will be holding another budget study session on June 10th, that's tomorrow, beginning at 6:00 PM at San Bruno City Hall, 567. Here we are. Presentations, there aren't any presentations this evening. View the agenda. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting, May 26, 2015. Any errors, corrections, omissions?
Through the chair.
There you go.
Can we remove item 7C?
This is approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm getting head seam already down here.
Keep going.
You're fine, Carol.
Errors, corrections, omissions, seeing then they'll be approved, dismitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier in council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member or staff, and I believe our city attorney would like to say something regarding one of these items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The record should reflect that council members Medina and Salazar are, have been recused from this item because one of the previous alternatives had been to locate the emergency shelters within 500 feet of where they live, and so that's why they are recused on this item. If a council member does wish to pull the item, they can, they can certainly do that, but there's, there's no need for them to, to leave the room if the record will reflect that they're not voting on that particular one.
So you're saying we could take, had we talked, we had this all planned out, I wouldn't have jumped the gun. So are you saying that we should approve, the Vice Mayor and I should be voting yes on the entire consent calendar with that item included? Are you saying it should be withdrawn and then voted on separately?
No, we, we talked with the clerk and she'll, the minutes will reflect that the two of you would be recused from voting on that item, but your yes votes, your affirmative votes, if that's the case, on the rest of the consent calendar would be clearly reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Okay. Any other items on the consent calendar? Any action on the consent calendar?
Moved approved.
Second.
As a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. And I believe we do have Jimmy Tan who would like to say something.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Jimmy Tan, City Engineer. One of the items in the consent calendar is the roadway closure for Whitman Way. SFPUC is currently constructing two large diameter pipelines, 54 and 66 inch pipelines within their easements crossing Whitman Way into Shelter Creek condos, and are requesting a road closure between Shelter Creek Lane and Cortland Drive to safely construct the pipelines and expedite construction activities. The construction will require about 10 to 20 feet of excavation to remove the existing pipeline and installation of the shoring and their new pipelines. The proposed roadway closure time will be from 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, Monday through Fridays, and the anticipated closure dates are from June 22nd to 26th, July 6th to the 10th, July 13th to the 17th, as well as for 20th to the 24th. On the roads will be reopened daily after 3:30 PM, and the closure date noted in the staff report will need to be changed from 6:15, July 15th to 19th, to the 22nd to 26th because we want to provide adequate time, adequate, you know, time for construction and notice to the residents. Two message boards will be on site to inform the residents in advance of the closure, one near the intersection of Geneveen and Hawthorne and the other at Whitman Way and Cortland Drive. And SFPUC will also be notifying residents and property owners within a boundary area by San Bruno Avenue, Shelter Creek Lane, Highway 280, Interstate 280, and Skyline 35, tomorrow upon approval tonight, which we just did. Residents driving along Geneveen Avenue will be routed to Shelter Creek Lane, towards San Bruno Avenue, and residents within Madison, Cortland, and Rosewood Drive will be routed, you know, to San Bruno Avenue through Princeton. One emergency lane access will be provided through construction for, you know, police and fire if needed. The residents are recommended to look out for detour routes within the area. And for more information and updates about this closure, residents can call at the 24-hour answering service at 866-973-1476, or go to the SFPUC website at www.sfwater.org/peninsula. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I know that this is a huge project for SFPUC, and my concern, and I think you clarified it there, is plenty of signage, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's real, and you've made, doing mailers to the whole neighborhood and everything too. All right, thank you very much. Great. Item number eight, public hearings. We're going to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance repealing Chapter 4.40 massage establishments and enacting new Chapter 4.40 massage businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a public hearing for the introduction of a new ordinance regulating massage establishments in the city. Prior to the last meeting at which you considered the ordinance, and then also prior to this meeting, the city staff mailed out a notice of the hearing mailed out, a public template of the ordinance and the staff report to all of the massage establishments, as well as all of the property owners in the city to provide them notice of what the, the new ordinance might say if introduced tonight. Since prior to the last meeting, the staff has not received any comments or inquiries about the ordinance. And one reason why that may be is that the ordinance, as we discussed last time, is consistent with the county's ordinance that they have adopted and is also consistent with similar ordinances that other cities up and down the peninsula are also adopting. So as we discussed last time, the advantage of adopting these similar ordinances is so that the cities can coordinate their enforcement efforts, such as they are, across all of the different cities and as well with the county. Staff has already met internally to discuss implementation of the ordinance, and we intend to have some additional meetings should the City Council introduce the ordinance at tonight's meeting after the public hearing. I won't go through the details of the ordinance, they're well explained in the staff report, and we went through them last time, but I'm happy to answer any questions before the public hearing.
Any questions for our city attorney at this time? Okay. This time we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to address us on this issue? All right. Seeing almost none. If we close the public hearing, you're precluded from speaking on this issue again. Motion by the council?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
The motion to close the public hearing on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion or action by the council?
See, we need to waive the first reading?
Right, right.
Move to waive the, thank you. Make a motion to waive the first reading?
Second.
Motion second to waive the first reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want me to make a motion to introduce the resolution? I'd like to introduce the resolution. Ordinance, whatever I am, whatever I'm doing. Focus, I have to focus, sorry.
You know what you want.
I know.
Okay. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number nine, public comment on items not on this agenda. It's a council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda is pursued to state law. Would anyone like to address the council on public comments?
Good evening. Marty Medina, Garden Avenue. I left the last city council meeting with a few unanswered questions about the hotel deal at the former Navy property. For the record, I am in favor of a, a new hotel, but not at the expense of public funds. The city council spent $1.4 million to purchase the parcel, and it's going to give the parcel away for a dollar. The city is going to pay or waive permitting fees for, of $650,000. The city would return the transit occupancy tax for two years, which is another $1.6 I looked up Measure E on San Bruno, or smartvoter.org. Anybody could look that up? And in there, I quote that almost four million in fees will be paid to fix streets, traffic lights, parks, and our local schools from that development project. Additionally, quote, "This is a well-planned and integrated project with all details fully disclosed." That is what the voters approved, 72% in 2001. So here we are, 2015. Instead of getting that four million, now we're giving four million back. And the details are not fully disclosed. There are private negotiations. I understand that's what is happening here, but that's not what the voters voted for in 2001. I bring that up because $4 million is a lot of money. I attended the last two San Bruno community fund meetings, and there were many ideas from the community. Maybe instead of giving away $4 million in funds to a multi-million, if not billion-dollar developer, that perhaps we could use those funds and give the community what they really want. Repeatedly, I attended two of those meetings, and I heard the community wants a year-round swimming pool. The community wants a beautified downtown. The community wants a multi-use civic center with an expanded and upgraded library with real community meeting rooms that aren't going to cost us much money. Having a hotel with community rooms, it's going to cost a lot of money to try to have a meeting there, unless you can tell me that they're free. Repeatedly, we heard senior city, senior center improvements, school assistance, upgraded parks, fields, especially compliance with ADA. Our parks do not have ADA compliant sidewalks. And lastly, the one thing that was really popular at the last meeting was high-speed internet fiber. All these items were mentioned previously by hundreds of attendees, attendees. I believe you all want what's best for San Bruno, but this hotel is not one of them. What the community wants is what identified, what was identified in this meeting, and I hope you keep that in mind as you negotiate with this multi-million, billion-dollar developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Conduct of Business, our first item is item 10A, adopt a resolution approving the San Bruno Community Foundation 2015-16 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is the next of many previous and to be coming important steps for the San Bruno Community Foundation, and that is the approval of its annual budget, as the foundation continues to move forward toward full implementation of its mission statement. As you'll note from the staff report, budget approval is one of your 10 reserved powers that are in the bylaws, and a couple of the other important ones are that you get to review and approve the foundation's investment and spending policy. So for example, that relates to how the foundation funds will be invested, including reserving a portion of those funds perhaps for an endowment and/or large capital projects. So that's one thing that you'll be able to look at in the future. Another reserved power in addition to the budget that you're looking at tonight is the foundation's grant-making policy, for example. And what is that? Well, that's a high-level policy that reflects the overall goals and priorities of the foundation, and those goals and priorities are articulated in the mission statement that you developed and spent so much time reviewing on behalf of the city for the foundation to, to implement. So in this case, the San Bruno Community Foundation did approve the budget that you see attached to the staff report. I've included for you a copy of the staff memo that accompanied it, as well as the detailed description of all of the different items, as well as a signed copy of the resolution from the foundation. It's important to note in that budget, I'll just highlight one thing, as the staff report by the director, Leslie Hadamia, notes, that there are, there is no amount for grants or dispersments from the, the foundation. And the reason for that is because, as you know, and as the foundation has announced, no decisions have been made regarding the use of those funds, and the grant-making and investment policies, which I just referred to, still need to be reviewed and approved by you after they're developed by the foundation. So for that reason, the foundation has indicated they would return at a later date with information about that, once those policies are developed by the foundation and then reviewed and approved by you. Leslie Hadamia is here to answer any questions, should you have any about the budget, but otherwise, staff recommends adopting a resolution approving the SBCF budget under your reserved powers in the bylaws. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Leslie is also available.
Any questions for Mark or Leslie? Ken?
We're just seeing the, reviewing this year's budget, but also comparing it with the, the end of this, this last year's expenditures. I'm curious as to what the costs, and I believe it's the consultant costs, on the, the community meetings and the interviews and that staff that we've been seeing, and if we could have a number on that, as far as what's that, and that, I believe it's, it's somewhat anticipated in the, in the, in the coming year also, if needed.
Right. So we engaged with the Public Dialogue Consortium to help run our community listening campaign, and that contract is for $34,000 that will be completed this fiscal year. We also did budget an amount for, I believe it was $30,000 for potential consultants we might need to develop our grant-making policies, do additional community engagement, but until we receive the report from the consultants and decide our next steps, that remains an open question.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark or Leslie? Action by the council?
Through, through the chair, and just, for, for those people that might be interested and anxious, it does state that there are no anticipation, there, there are no funds set aside for grant, grant writing or anything, and that once consultants come on and once all of the, the discussions are, are delineated and decided on, then they'll bring in someone to, to deal with how to, how to set up a grant, and then possibly, if there is a decision to, to write grants, then at that point, the, the foundation would come with a revised budget.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's not like we got to wait a whole year before anything happens.
Right. Because no decisions have been made, we didn't want to put a placeholder number in the budget, because that would sort of presume that there was some vision, whereas we're still open, but the goal is that we will develop some grant policies to bring before you, before this, the next fiscal year ends, and with that a revised budget that reflects that policy.
You said it better. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10B, authorize fireworks stand permits for 2015 upon finding that the nonprofit organizations meet requirements of Resolution 2008-59 and ordinance number 1700.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight to ask that you authorize the fireworks stand permits for 16 groups, which is one less than we had last year. All the applications were gone over by my office, by the fire department, by the police department, and the subcommittee of O'Connell and Ibera, and everything's in place. Last week, we had a mandatory safety meeting, and all 16 had a representative there for the meeting, and all, now I need is your approval to go forward. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Carol?
Through the chair. I did have one question, being that we were in a severe drought, if there's going to be additional expenses or additional preparation required to deal with dry weather, or dry, what, potential fire hazards this year?
We talked about that. It was talked about.
Again, for nod.
Yes, the, the public education efforts by the fire marshal has already been initiated. They'll do some extra postings and, and advertising of, of the drought issues related to things that are going on in the state. We did also talk to the, all the applicants about the issues with CAL FIRE and all the fuel moisture issues and, and what they, what they've done so far to, to staff as of June 1st. So it's just a little extra effort in public education in regards to safety and drought awareness.
Are there any areas in the city that, that would be potential hazards or areas that are more hazardous?
Well, in any, any part of the canyons, you know, are, you know, definitely a concern. So all we can do is, you know, patrol the areas and hope that people remain safe when they shoot off fireworks, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or action by the council?
I'll make, make a motion to authorize the, or I guess we're, a resolution. Introduce a resolution?
No.
Yeah, just a motion.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
Motion second on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. 10C, receive report on sewer lateral repair and replacement policies and programs in San Mateo County cities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, again, members of the City Council. The purpose of this report is to provide you with some additional information about a couple of issues that were raised at the last several meetings with respect to sewer laterals. And I'm going to be presenting the report on the first couple of issues. That has to do with some survey results from other cities, and those results were compiled predominantly by Jim Burge, the deputy director, who conveniently is on vacation this week. The second part of the report, because they deal with engineering issues that I'm not as readily familiar with, you'll hear from the city engineer, Jimmy Tan. So with the, the last couple of meetings, the council raised a number of questions which we tried to answer in the staff report, and let me just quickly summarize those questions and answers for you. The first question really was, what are, what are we doing compared to what other cities in San Mateo County are doing with respect to a variety of policies? And so what you see in the staff report as an attachment is the, the best information we could come up with, which is a survey of all 20 cities. One of them was, we did not get a response from, but we did get a response from, from 19. And so basically, the staff asked those cities the, the same questions, and then prepared a chart for you, and, and what that really indicates is that, for example, San Bruno is one of about 15 cities, so almost all of them, in the county in which property owners own both the upper and lower laterals, and, and we would be with the implementation of the approved policy that you, that you went through with at the last meeting. Conversely, San Bruno is one of only two, interestingly enough, only two, that provide regularly scheduled maintenance for those with approved cleanouts. In fact, six cities don't actually provide any such services at all. Four of them, Belmont, Millbrae, Burlingame, San Bruno, that's us, properties with approved cleanouts and histories of, history of problems, the city will provide maintenance, and even under the policy that you recently adopted, will continue to do so. And as you may remember, that's a policy that affects about 25% of the property owners in San Bruno, the ones that have approved cleanouts. The policy you adopted won't change the situation for the 75% or so of the property owners that don't have such a cleanout. The survey also indicated that about 14 cities, almost all of them, including San Bruno, the property owner is responsible for repair and maintenance, or excuse me, for repair and replacement of their defective sewer lateral. So in sum, I think that the chart fairly represents that San Bruno is in the large majority of cities in the county in terms of what they do for repair and, and replacement, and in a very select few minority in terms of the maintenance services that they provide for the residents as part of their, their routine services. One of the other questions you asked us to look at is what do other cities do in terms of possible assistance for individuals who might be impacted by a defective sewer lateral that they need to repair or replace? And we provided you with a summary of that as well. There are a couple of different programs. As we've noted, some cities do have a grant program. I think the staff's conclusion on those is that those are most effective when the grant amount is a significant percentage of the cost of replacing the, the lateral. So the cities that have those programs usually allocate a certain amount of money at the beginning of the year. The reports from staff are is that everybody rushes in on the first day that the program is available, or shortly thereafter, uses up as much of the money as possible to get laterals replaced, and then there's not money for the, for the remainder of the year. One of the other interesting alternatives was the possibility of the city, for example, issuing a request for proposals, qualify some, some contractors, get bids that they're willing to agree to, to perform certain work, and then those contractors would be available to members of the public who wish to do their sewer lateral, and that may be more cost-efficient for individuals rather than having everybody go out and get a separate bid from a private company for their, for the work. So that's one of the other things that, that you may wish to consider. And so this evening, if you have any direction about that, we'd be, we'd be happy to hear it. So in summary, that's what the, what the survey showed. One other topic that's, that's come up fairly frequently, and Jimmy Tan, the city engineer, will touch on in just a minute, is SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows, and there's been some discussion about that. I think it's, it's fairly clear that nobody disagrees that the city had a significant number of SSOs over the last multiple number of years, and even had the city had fewer SSOs, the city still would have been sued by daykeeper and still would have had a consent decree, as have many other cities on the peninsula. So while the absolute number of SSOs has now dramatically decreased as a result of the city's policies, we, we do know that SSOs in laterals are actually a fairly small percentage of the total number of SSOs. Turns out only about 27% or so percent, so somewhere about a, about a quarter since 2010. So while SSOs and laterals are important, they're not the main cause of SSOs, and we wanted to make sure that the, the council was aware of that. So now I'd like to turn it over briefly to Jimmy, who is going to tell you a little bit about the other two topics that are in the staff report, INI, inflow and infiltration, and ways that the city is addressing that, and then the second thing he's going to talk about is the going-forward results and efforts of the CIP program for repair and replacement of sewer infrastructure.
Thanks, Mark. It's a known fact that INI exists in sewer systems, as, you know, infrastructure are getting old, and there may be damage from physical conditions, you know, through settlement and root intrusions, and then water infiltrates into the pipelines. And then sewer master plan evaluated the INI, and through hydraulic analysis, using a hydraulic model, and provided recommendations. The evaluation, you know, evaluated whether or not, what INI can be reduced from 10 to 50% to eliminate any of the capacity-related projects, and when, whether it's cost-effective to achieve that reduction or not. The capacity pipelines are segments of, you know, sewer main that conveys and collects flows from a larger area, and the result of the analysis indicated that all the recommended capacity projects in the master plan will still be required even though their INIs are reduced. The pipelines sizes may be smaller, and the length may be shorter, but the projects will still be required. The master plan also evaluated whether a 30% reduction in INI could eliminate one of the areas in the capacity project, and they, they mentioned that it can, but the 30% reduction would require replacing and rehabbing about 40,000 feet of, feet of pipelines, as well as sewer main, sewer laterals, which is almost all of the sewers in the basin or the area. And the cost to, to replace that capacity project, it's about $520,000, that's estimated in the sewer master plan, but the cost to replace 40,000 feet of pipelines with lower laterals is estimated to be about $6.3 million. So the cost to replace all the pipelines in the basin to reduce INI is a significant financial investment, you know, in comparison, in comparison to implementing the capacity projects. So the city is currently moving forward with a cost-effective approach. The capacity projects, you know, identified in a master plan is what the city's trying to implement to reduce the future sanitary sewer overflows. It doesn't mean that the city's not addressing any of the It doesn't mean that the city's not addressing any of the INIs. We're currently, currently have an aggressive spot repair program in place to mitigate large holes, offsets, and cracks, and aggressive replacement program that would be going on for the next 20 years. The main focus is to complete the capacity projects by 2019, which is required by the consent decree. And the replacement projects will be implemented based on the priorities established in the 10-year work plan. And the first area of the, you know, the work plan, the 10-year work plan, that's bonded by the Huntington Avenue, San Mateo Avenue, San Felippe, and El Camino.
Any questions for staff? Connie?
There's, there's one more portion of the report that was, that was the segment on INI, but we wanted to give you an overview of the capital projects. So it was a later part of the council's request. So we can take questions now and then, or if you would allow him to proceed. He has a little more to say.
Anything now? Okay. Ken?
I thought the report was going to be on a replacement policy and program. So, I mean, what I got, what I've gotten out of the report as far as laterals for our residents is a comparison with other cities and what they do. And are you, is staff proposing something? Or are you waiting for the city to, the council to, to give direction on what sort of plan or no plan? What is...
So the purpose of the report was to respond with the additional information that the city council requested, including additional initiatives that the council may wish to consider. We are not recommending any additional action at this point as an urgent priority from staff's perspective. If the council wished to do something additional in terms of its continuing proactive maintenance policy, we had a couple of suggestions included in the report for your consideration. We would await your direction.
Is the city going to continue to require cleanouts to residents through various, through various permitting or various projects? Will that policy still stay on?
It is my understanding that that remains a desirable practice. And to the extent that that has been required as part of construction projects in the past, we would, we would generally continue to maintain that practice, yes. Regardless of who maintains, who replaces the lateral, having a means by which you can easily get to it, which the cleanout provides, is a desirable beneficial improvement in the system.
When we're talking about cleanouts, are you talking about one that we used to ask in order to, require in order to be part of the maintenance when the program existed? Is that what we're saying is still desirable? So let's say we're at an older house, they have no cleanout. You're just saying, obviously, a cleanout is desirable to anyone. So we can have it right on their line, inside their property. Are we saying we're still asking or, and/or saying it's desirable to have the one that used to exist that was required in order for the program, for the maintenance program?
So I believe the council member Aguirre's question addressed a requirement that would pertain to new construction and improvements occurring at a property. And in that case, we would be looking for a cleanout that meets current standards.
At the property?
At the property.
The requirement is that if there's any, yeah, new construction or any improvements or additions to plumbing will require a cleanout if not one exists or if not an updated one exists at, behind the property line, on the, on the private property. As far as direction, before we go on to, you know, INI and things, I'm just thinking that, okay, made a policy, the majority of the council made a, made a decision to place the responsibility all on property owners. And so as much as I don't agree with that, I don't believe that's leaving it as it is and not making it a priority or not establishing a program is not proactive, it's not proactive at all. I believe if we're still going to be concerned about SSOs, we're going to be concerned about the aging of our, of our infrastructure, even on private property or no matter whose responsibility it is, that we should probably have a program. And we should probably get the input from the, from the public and, you know, prepare the public for what to anticipate. I believe some of our neighbors have done that and set up a program. And so even though it is the property owner's responsibility, I just don't want them to be surprised, you know, if in fact something happens.
Okay. Next topic?
Great, thanks. I know there's been some questions regarding, you know, what has the city been using for a lot of rates that's been collected. So the city has an aggressive sewer replacement program in place. So within the next five years, the cities, the city will place approximately 14 miles of pipelines and about five sewer pump station totaling $44 million worth. And we came to council for a ward of several sewer projects at the end of last year. Currently, one pump station's under construction, which is Olympic Pump Station. One other pump station's under design, which is Spyglass Pump Station. Pipeline projects, or several pipeline projects are under design right now for Trenton, Genevieve Avenue, San Mateo Avenue, Crystal Springs Road, Crestmore Canyon. So there's quite a lot of stuff going on under design right now, but then I anticipate we'll have a lot of construction work during next year as well.
Okay. Any other questions for staff on any of these items? All right, that's a report that requires no action. So, Michael, you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to make a suggestion that we start formulating a program. And my ideas for the program were that we take basically the amount of money that we were spending historically on the repair, or the repair and replacement of those things. I know that the big concern and one of the reasons I was in favor of removing that program was that it was, the costs were uncontrollable and they could, they could go through the roof and we had no way to limit that. We had no way to target what we were repairing. And so my idea for a program that I think would be a big improvement over what we had in place was one where we budget a certain amount of money. And it looks like other cities are doing similar things. We take that money and we dedicate that to a lateral replacement. And as part of that program, we identify areas of the city where we know that there are issues, whether it's because of age or the condition of the soil, areas that we are interested in proactively replacing laterals in, and move those areas to the top of the list and allow people to come and apply for, to be part of that program for a particular year up until the budget is exhausted and then keep working our way down. And that way, we're doing, not only are we being proactive by replacing them, but we're replacing the ones that we have assessed as being the ones that need replacement and also taking some of that burden back off of the residents.
In summary, that is one of the recommendations in terms of opportunities. And we will certainly, we can certainly look at what the parameters of such a program might be. Again, as the city attorney said, the experience of others who have, and in fact, our experience is consistent with what we've heard from others. So you need a relatively high dollar value for each replacement in order to incentivize people to take advantage of the opportunity proactively to replace a damaged lateral rather than waiting until it's absolutely not functioning at all. And that even a relatively significant amount of money can go pretty fast. So with those two considerations, we would certainly look at what the parameters of such a program might be and bring that back.
Yeah, I know that, oh, sorry. I know our experience has been that there are a few people that take advantage of the program that we do have in place where we offer exactly that. There haven't been a whole lot of takers. But I think if we do outreach in other neighborhoods, there might be more of an interest in doing it that way. And maybe without even adjusting the dollar amounts, I think we still might be able to get people interested in participating. And then the other, I saw that some other cities might be doing things where they waive the permit fees and things that also help make it more palatable to make that, make that replacement. So we can include those as well.
Go ahead.
Just on what the vice mayor said, which I've talked about, I'll go bring it up again, the city of San Mateo. On the permit fees, correct, that is a potential, because that can add up, of course, depending if you needed the encroachment as well as the plumbing. The city of San Mateo, I can't, I think they may, they have a better incentivizing program as far as dollars are concerned. I don't know how much they put in that budget, but this year, I believe, they no longer took applications in the month of late January, early February, and city of San Mateo due to the dollars running out, and they wanted to make sure they could cover. But obviously, that started July 1 through at least December, so that those assets were available for at least six months. The city of San Mateo did, does, or did do the contract, and then you had to go out and get three bids, you had to submit, they've modified that, but I would think that they've had some success. I would suggest the city of San Mateo was maybe a resource.
And I was just going to say, historically, I think it's important to look at when Michael mentioned, looking at the money we have spent, it's all really dictated by emergency repairs on lower laterals. And, you know, one year it could spend a million bucks and the year before it could spend $500,000. So it really, we have to look at kind of a bigger picture on this. And then, just to clarify, are you talking about proactively putting a program in place or reacting to people that have an emergency or for both?
My idea would be to be proactive, not responding to emergencies. And I was, I was thinking of, you know, there is a pool of money that we approve every year that's specifically for spot repairs. And I was thinking targeting that, that amount of money, which has been historically a good run rate for us in terms of addressing the issues and using it for that. I know that, well, now that we eliminated the emergency repair portion of it, we have the, yeah, we did. We did. We won't, we won't repair, we won't do emergency repairs.
No, not the response.
Right.
Responses.
Response to cleanout, but not the money that we were spending for the contractor to come out and do the replacement. So we do, we have that pool of money that we've historically allocated for those emergency spot repairs. And that was the money I thought we could dedicate toward this program without impacting any of our other longer term infrastructure programs.
Okay. If I could also interject, even if we adopted a program like a few other cities, for a $50 fee, you can get a, you can get it filmed, just so that resident could, you know, can see, you know, the condition. I also wanted to ask, what is going on with Sharp Park? I mean, if we only have five takers on that, $1,700 is not a lot of incentive, but what is, you know, because if we don't use that money, we can't use it anywhere else? Or what is, what is the plan on that?
Yeah, the discussion with the regional board is, you know, that money is dedicated just to the Sharp Park area and we can't use it elsewhere. And we were provided an extension to 2017 to be able to get more residents involved with the grant program. Currently, there's a contractor in place to televise the lower laterals, and we came to council for that. And they're proceeding with that work, and we'll be able to determine how many lower laterals, how many laterals are defective within the remaining 305 homes.
Can you increase the $1,700 figure?
The answer is yes, you can increase it, but not with that pot of money. So the city could increase the amount that it provides, but the maximum that can come from that penalty money is $1,700 per property.
So I guess the plan is that if you come across a lateral that is defective or is in danger of failing, that you'll contact the homeowner and say, this is, this is approved. We encourage you to take advantage of this program?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Irene?
Might I suggest we look at that as being our first target part since we've already got $1,700 for each of those people? And if we run across however many people that really need it, we could use that as our first target area?
Thanks for the report, and I think you have some direction too. Great. Item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Eisen Latunich for the development of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan in the amount not to exceed $197,671. David?
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, the purpose of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan project that is before you this evening is to develop a vision and identify specific individual development projects to implement new and improvements to existing bicycle and pedestrian networks within the city of San Bruno. The intent of this plan will be to integrate it with the overall master planning efforts for streets and sidewalks within the community. This master plan will help to clarify and carry forward the more conceptual visions for these bicycle and pedestrian networks as they are described in the city's general plan and transit corridors plan. The network improvements that are identified will be implemented through the city's capital improvement program, CIP. Funding for this project comes from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC Development Act Article III grant in the amount of $100,000 and a local match of $100,000 that was approved by you, the city council, in January of 2014. Since that grant funding cannot be used for project management, an additional $40,000 for project management has been requested in the staff report, and these funds would come from Measure A. A competitive request for proposals, RFP, process was used to identify a recommended project team to prepare this master plan. Six teams submitted proposals. Staff members from both the Public Services Department and the Community Development Department reviewed the proposals. Consideration was given to a number of factors, including cost, schedule, and approach. The overall cost estimates ranged from $169,460 to $199,751. Four of the proposals were determined to satisfy minimum requirements identified in our scope. Two of the proposals were determined not to meet those minimum requirements. As it turned out, both the low-cost proposal of $169,460 and the high-cost proposal of $199,751 were not brought forward. And they were not brought forward because in both cases, what we found were the teams submitting the proposals submitted rather standardized approaches that really didn't reflect the needs or conditions here in San Bruno. The remaining four proposals, in terms of cost, ranged from $193,284 to $198,830. Based on our interviews of the four teams brought forward in the process, the interview panel, which included members of the Community Development Department and Public Services Department, and the chairperson of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, identified the firm and team of Eisen Latunich, transportation environmental and urban planners from San Francisco teamed with David Perizzi, transportation planning from Sausalito, to prepare the master plan. This team's proposed cost estimate is $197,671. Staff and the chair of BPAC came to this recommendation based on the following. Both Nico Latunich and David Perizzi principals would have direct and considerable day-to-day contact and roles in the preparation of the master plan. Both individuals communicated considerable enthusiasm and commitment to prepare a document that would be customized to meet the needs of the city of San Bruno. Nico Latunich is bilingual, being fluent in both English and Spanish, and committed to incorporating bilingual components into the project. The team submitted a very strong public engagement process, which included a survey, an internet survey, a number of community events and meetings, group bike and pedestrian assessments, and involvement of local schools. In addition, their proposal also... In addition, their proposal also had subconsultants in the area of Americans with Disabilities Act requirements and health assessment. They also indicated in their proposal that they would prepare a 10-year action plan, identifying and prioritizing capital improvements to move forward the overall project, and they indicated that they would provide at least five grant-ready competitive grants, grant projects for submittal. Based on this information, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the resolution attached to your staff report, recommending authorization by the city manager to execute a contract with Eisen Latunich for the development of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan not to exceed $197,671. This evening, Nico Latunich is in the audience and would be prepared to respond to any questions you may have. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Ken?
I don't have any questions, and I'm glad he's here, because I was going to ask, I mean, we've never had something like this. We've had other studies, we've had other high-priced consultants. I just wanted to be clear on how we justify this, because this is something, and sitting on the CCAG BPAC Advisory Board for the last over 10 years, it's amazing how many millions of dollars are being funneled into cities for pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And that's, and I'm proud of our staff, you know, our city, and our committee as to how they've been able to take advantage of all these grants, because we're not really, Measure A funds maybe, but grants, that's how we're paying for all our improvements. And I was really proud when, you know, about 18 months ago, we got this, it was actually the BPAC and the MTC approved San Bruno's application for this grant. So, but I'd like him to, if he could, to maybe expand briefly as to what we can anticipate as to the making up of this master plan.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Nico Latunich. I'm a principal at Eisen Latunich. We're a transportation planning firm based here in the Bay Area. We've been around for about 10 years, and we work on a range of transportation projects, although we do specialize in pedestrian and bicycle planning. We've developed plans for, most of our work has been in the Bay Area, we've developed plans for several cities, counties, transportation authorities. We did the bicycle plans for Caltrain and Bard, and also the regional plan for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. We'd be excited to work on the San Bruno plan. David gave a pretty thorough assessment of our work plan. We are a small firm, and what sets us apart from the larger consulting firms is that we are able to provide a more customized product and more individualized attention. The larger firms will tend to assign their projects to associate planners who have less experience. Because we're a small firm, we really do everything ourselves at the principal level, and we, our overhead rates are lower because we're a small firm, and that's how we're able to do it. But that means we take on very few projects every year. We're strategic about which projects we pursue, and we'd be excited to work on the San Bruno plan for that reason. What you can expect to get at the end of the planning process is, we, what gets us excited as planners is to have a plan that will be implemented, as opposed to so, so many plans that just sit on the shelf and gather dust. And for us, the secret to an implementable plan is a work plan of improvements that are financially realistic. You're not looking at pie in the sky, sort of everything in the kitchen sink. You're just, you're being really strategic about what's important to the community and identifying the top, however many, three, five, 10 projects that will make the biggest impact to the community, and that will provide the guidance to city staff on which projects they should work on for the next few years.
Action by the council?
I'll adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
No.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of 12 vehicles, including two Ford Transit vans, one Ford Flex crossover utility vehicle, one Ford F-150 truck, two Ford F-350 trucks, one Ford Escape, one Ford Taurus police sedan, and four Ford Explorer police vehicles from Town Ford of Redwood City, California, in the total amount of $405,336.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I can never hear you. My name is Robert Wood, and I'm a public services management analyst, and I'm here tonight to present 12 replacement vehicles for your consideration and approval. I did want to mention that before this meeting, we, Central Garage brought several of the vehicles out for review. We had two council members present. We were not able to bring two of our trucks here tonight because of an earlier cash-off of engine failure, and several months ago, they've both been out of service. Just for some background, how we determine which vehicles to put on the list, Central Garage evaluates each of the city's 137 vehicles, we don't automatically just put on there, we review each one separately. We base it on age, condition, maintenance history, and opportunities to improve the fleet efficiency and effectiveness. Of all these criteria, age and the condition are the two main considerations. This list represents the worst of our fleet. Many of the vehicles on the list are 17 to 20 years old. Even for vehicles with low mileage, repeated heavy use does take their toll. As vehicles age, finding parts is also much more difficult. Improving the fleet's fuel efficiency is also an important goal. This year, the Ford Escape SUV and the Ford Taurus have EcoBoost technology. We did look, also this year, we looked to opportunities to maximize the fleet. We were able to share two vehicles between departments, and we also are transferring a low-use vehicle into our general fleet for more staff to use. Then, once the list was finalized by Central Garage, we give it to finance to make sure there's enough money, and then that's presented to you. The city does try to maintain a delicate balance between limiting costs and maintaining a well-equipped fleet. The fleet is often the only representation the public does see of the city. We're trying to have as best a fleet as we can with biocontrolling costs. Regarding the vehicles themselves, we advertised, received two bids. The lowest responsible bid was from Town Ford of Redwood City, and tonight, we recommend the purchase of these vehicles in the amount of $405,336, and this price does include all the special equipment needed for the police patrol vehicles. If approved, delivery is expected within 90 days. The old vehicles get auctioned off, and any revenues go back into the equipment reserve funds. Just as a reminder, right now, we're in the middle of the budget, and next year's vehicles are coming up, and probably within the next six months, we'll be here again with that list. That concludes my presentation. I'm now open for questions.
Robert, a question. Why one Taurus police sedan and four Ford Explorers instead of five Ford Explorers?
One is a detective vehicle, and they, it's my understanding, they've historically have had the Taurus. It's also sometimes used as an unmarked vehicle. Or, is that correct, Ed?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My, hello? The four, the three Explorers are actually marked patrol vehicles, and that's the chosen new patrol vehicle for the San Bruno Police Department, as was chosen through testing. The Taurus, as mentioned before, is an unmarked vehicle used by an investigator, which is not a traditional black-and-white car, it's just an unmarked.
Okay. All right. We have, I don't know, somewhere between eight and 10 unmarked vehicles used for undercover or just detective, non-police work, so that's what that's for.
Don't give away all the secrets.
Right.
I didn't say which kind they were.
Okay.
So, if I could, we're going to see SUVs now. There's no more Crown Vics, Crown Victorias are gone, and how many more do we have?
Uh, I was...
The whole look of patrols will change.
We still probably have around 10, I think, Crown Vics, and they, every four to six years is about their useful life, and then we upgrade them with the Explorer.
Not made anymore, not used anymore, and so, we will get used to seeing Explorers or SUVs.
Yeah, Ford is sort of streamlining their product line. The Taurus is the only sedan they really carry in that line.
Any other questions for Robert?
Through the chair. Yeah, so in the past, when we've had vehicles come up for our approval, I asked that we get more, a little more quantification in terms around why we're doing it. And I think you've done a much better job in this report in terms of identifying why certain vehicles are being identified for replacement, but I'm still not completely convinced on all, and there are some vehicles here that I clearly agree, I couldn't dispute that they should be replaced, but then there are others that are not as compelling. So, seeing it as a package, to me, is a little less compelling overall, and I know that there might be some economies of scale in purchasing all of them at once from the same vendor.
What kind of information would be helpful to you in future presentations?
Well, there are some vehicles that are clearly very old, but don't have a lot of mileage, and I think part of the explanation is that they're used, and they're parked somewhere, and part of their use is that they're parked somewhere. But to me, that would still indicate less wear and tear. And when you're driving a car, you get wear and tear. If you park a car, there's no wear and tear on it, even if you're, you know, if it's in use, you're hauling, you're using a truck to haul stuff while it's parked, it's not really, shouldn't be deteriorating. So, my point there is, do we have more vehicles than we really need? Can we do something with our resource management that would make them more effective, more utilized? I didn't see anything about opportunities for sharing with other municipalities, purchasing used vehicles that are newer than the ones we have, lease options, any of that. I didn't see that any of that was explored. So, that's what would, to me, would have been a lot more compelling, so...
We did try and, there are two vehicles that we're sharing between departments to try and get more life out of them, between two parks vehicles with public services. I know we're coming back later to reevaluate the equipment reserve fund, and we'll probably have ideas of our replacement schedule, our useful life schedule. We're happy, we brought them out today, we're happy to schedule other opportunities to come to the yard or to...
Now, like I said, I don't dispute that the vehicles are old and probably should be retired, it's just the replacing them that has me concerned.
Like, some of the low-mileage ones, like the, some of the parks ones, there's a lot of wear and tear. The door has been, come off and been rewelded twice. They just get a lot of wear and tear. The physical condition, the type of use that they're using for is actually quite heavy.
So, just one suggestion, if the council wishes to delete some of the vehicles from the list, that Robert tells me that we can maintain the individual bid prices on the ones that we would purchase. So, you can either move forward with whole list, none of the list, or some of the list, if it's the council's pleasure to take action on this tonight.
I don't know if anyone else agrees with me, but...
Well, just to comment on what Robert said, you know, having an old fleet of work trucks myself, a lot of trucks, and we drive in and out of San Francisco a lot, don't have a lot of miles on them, but they really get a lot of wear and tear, just simply because of the day-to-day, you know, rigors of driving in and around traffic. You could put 300,000 or 400,000 miles on a truck, and it could almost look new if you're doing all highway, but it's different when you're dealing in the parks, stop and go, stop and go, stop and go. So, there's a lot of wear and tear, so there's two different kinds of wear there, and I understand what you're saying. Any more discussion or action by the council? Ken?
And I'll just add that, we ask the same questions as at least the vehicles that are 20 years old and have less than 100,000 miles on them, and actually look very good. It's not that they have dents or anything, it's, there's a repair factor, and how efficient they are in the field if they're spending more time in, you know, in the shop, and that, and that cost, and then on top of that, a 20-year-old vehicle, parts are, you know, are not that readily available. So, I'm in favor of, you know, reassessing how we replace vehicles, and, you know, possibly how many we get, and how we use them between, within departments. But I believe we've got a fairly needy list here of replacements, so I'm going to vote to replace.
Through the chair. I think that the vice mayor had asked for something of more detail. I do know that there's, for example, though, in age, it is certainly there, but it's about 51,000 miles. Well, it sits in a lot, and maybe it's not, as I heard, you know, with the leaves, and it gets this, and it gets that, but in essence, what is it, 1996, 95? I think the question is, is how many carpools do we have? Is the, we have 137. We're talking about, again, I've asked about the equipment reserve, and the finance director is reviewing that, has taken out obsoleted items, has gone ahead and put things that were, should have been there that weren't there, things that have been adjusted, that were accruing correctly, so we can replace them. So, I'm bringing up, I think I'm on the same path of that, is, yes, I can understand that a police vehicle idles a lot, so as well as it may have mileage, it has additional factors involved, the mayor was referencing. But have we looked at other options? Have we given it the true value that we would do for our own homes and families, and the expectations that we have? And I think that is what, I mean, there is more detail that I'm sure the average person doesn't know, because we're not there day-to-day. But at the same time, have we looked at lease options? Have we looked at consolidating? Have we looked at a vehicle that sits? I mean, I've gone by city hall, and in the lot between the fire station and city hall, there are vehicles. I'm not saying they don't get used, I really don't know that, but I do know I see them there frequently. So, I think, unless I'm missing what your assessment was, that is kind of what I think was asked for last time.
Any more discussion? Or action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
No.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
No.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a design contract with BKF Engineers, Inc., for design of the El Camino Real and Angus Avenue intersection improvements project in an amount not to exceed $59,612.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. William Lee, management analyst with Public Services. In January 2014, the city, with council authorization, applied for Measure A pedestrian and bicycle program grant funding through the San Mateo County Transportation Authority for improvements to the El Camino Real and Angus Avenue intersection. The intersection is one of the busiest in the city for pedestrians and motorists. It sits in front of the city civic center, which includes city hall, fire station 51, and the library. It is also used by parents and students coming to and from Allen Elementary School in Bel Air. It is also close to downtown, to Tanfran Shopping Center, public transit stops, and major freeways. The intersection was also IDed for improvement in many of the city's planning documents, including the transit corridors plan, the San Bruno general plan, the community transportation plan, and will be a key component in the upcoming bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The TA approved funding for the project in June of 2014, and the council authorized the city manager to enter into a funding agreement in September and incorporate the project into the capital improvement program under the Transit Corridor Pedestrian Connection Improvement Project. The funding agreement commits the TA to fund the project up to $300,000. The funding agreement commits the TA to fund the project up to $300,000 for both design and construction with a local city match of 30,000 or 10% with the match coming from Measure A Local Streets and Transportation Funds. Improvements to the intersection will include things such as a second high-visibility crosswalk, improvements to the ADA accessible curb ramps, ball belts, and median refuges. And we have tonight a preliminary schematic of what the improvements might look like. But it is, it is important to note that this is just a conceptual schematic drawing and if the, if the resolution is adopted tonight and more analyses is done with the design firm, some of the improvements that are shown on here may change, but it does show the intersection and what high-visibility, high-visibility crosswalks, addition of median refuges, ramps, and ball belts might look like. After internal drafts and reviews and presentations to the San Bruno B-PAC Committee, staff issued a request for proposals in April 2015 seeking a design firm for the project. Staff received two proposals and based on a panel review of proposal content, qualifications, and costs, staff recommends BKF Engineers to complete the design for the intersection improvements. BKF has experience working in San Bruno on the Cressmore Reconstruction Project and has extensive experience working on street improvements that require coordination with Caltrans. Since El Camino Real is a state route, all designs and improvements must be reviewed by Caltrans. BKF's proposed cost was also 17% lower than the other proposal that was received. Currently, the timeline to complete design is estimated to be October 2015 with construction estimated to be completed by June 2016. However, the funding agreement specifies that the funds must need to be expended by 2019. So, if additional coordination is necessary with the B-PAC or with the upcoming bicycle and pedestrian master plan, there is some room within the timeline to expend the funding. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your attention and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions of staff? Ken?
I know BKF as engineers. I don't know them as designers of spaces and to see striped crosswalks isn't turning me on. I've seen, I've seen areas, I've seen communities where they have been pedestrian-friendly and they turn them in and they've used different materials and things. So, I'm going to ask if, whether the council as a whole, whether it's a study session or whether there's a preliminary review of what sort of additional designs they come up with as, as we lead up to, to a final proposal. And I'd be happy to have, I mean, as far as the B-PAC be involved also.
Definitely, there will be some alternatives proposed. Again, this is just a rough
Yeah.
schematic that if we need to change anything that is shown in the picture
Right.
there's definitely...
And I realize, I mean, this is an intersection, like you said, that you stated, we, we applied to get a Tiger Grant that was hopefully going to get done in the same, in the same way. But this is going to set the template of what we just approved $200,000 for, for a bicycle pedestrian master plan and plus what we want to model, you know, the rest of the city of, you know, for the, for the pedestrians. So, I think this is kind of important at this stage and it's, it's, it's good at this time, too. So, I just would like to not give BKF too much free rein before, before they put it all together.
Councilmember Ibera, you're absolutely correct. One of the reasons that we delayed this slightly was because we wanted to, as you saw with the award of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, we want to make sure that we coordinate this. And they have great ideas on how to be proactive and come up with the newest design that would be more attractive to the, to the public and...
I would much rather M design it than BKF. Nothing against BKF, but...
BKF has a small contract to do the final design, but we are going to rely on our architects to, to help us with coming up with alternatives so we could share with the council. And we have something that's unique and represents the community. And as we said, this is one of the most important intersections for pedestrians in the city. So, we want to make sure that it is attractive and useful.
Great. Irene?
Thank you. Are you going to run this by Traffic and Safety Commissions?
Definitely. We gave, they, they were involved when we were doing the initial reviews of the RFPs. We let the TSBC know that this project was upcoming and that they would be involved when we were designing the intersection.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Good.
To the Chair?
Michael?
Seems like 60, for $60,000, you could probably paint those stripes on there and just do it. So, it seems like, like a big to-do. I know that the, the TSBC had put together a, a whole toolkit of, of traffic calming things, all the things that, that we knew were effective and, and calming traffic. And if we have specific issues, I'm wondering why it has to be so elaborate. I mean, if we need a cross, I mean, I know that intersection, I go across it a lot and I would love to see some big noticeable crosswalks there. I don't see why we need, why it has to be so involved.
Councilmember Salazar, you are correct. This is, however, this is not just the, the crosswalks as you can see, there is engineering involved, analysis. Caltrans is not going to allow us to do anything in this intersection unless you show actually engineering design that shows how exactly we're going to implement this. And it involves not just putting a crosswalk in, but extending medians, extending possibly ball bouts into the area. So, these are like different options and the coordination with Caltrans, I'm sure that you know how long Caltrans takes and how much information they need in order to approve. So, it involves a lot of engineering design and plans that needs to be submitted and applications filed with Caltrans. So, we will make sure that if any of the amounts is not used or is not needed or supplemented by the architectural designs, that, that we will hold that. This is a time and material not to exceed. So, whatever is needed, we will use, whatever is not needed, then it could be left over at the end of the project. But we expect that this contract will be used up because of the coordination with Caltrans and a number of iterations, we have to go back and forth with them in order for them to allow us. This is just a very conceptual idea that he came up during the interviews. This is not what we're going to implement, this is just to show you that there are different elements and just a geometry of what this intersection looks like.
And the overall cost, including construction and design, is going to be 330,000? Am I reading that right?
That is our budget, correct. Maximum.
All right. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Next time, we shouldn't bring a picture, I think.
Yeah, I think what's
There's the design right there.
The misunderstanding is that each corner and it's probably going to get an expanded sidewalk area, which, which you're referring to as ball bouts, and then the potential that in front of City Hall, that will also be widened also. So, wider sidewalks, larger sidewalks at the corners in addition to high-profile crosswalks.
That's correct, Councilmember. This is basically, what you see here is what was originally submitted for the grant approval. This is not necessarily what we will end up with. This is just one idea that when we submitted for the grant, we said it could include any or all of these different amendments to the intersection. However, once we come up with the final design and the alternatives, this, this could change as long as we're within the limits of the grant and it's for the improvements for the pedestrians, for the intersection, we could make the changes as necessary to bring it up to something that's feasible within the budget, 330,000 and would be something that would be attractive and would make pedestrians more comfortable in crossing. You all have probably crossed this intersection. I cross it two or three times a day just to go into downtown or in this area. We got the library, we got the schools. The school kids actually go in both directions, both east and west, two, two different schools. So, we have a guard there, crossing guard there. So, this is a very usable and very prominent intersection for us and we're going to make sure that we put enough staff time that make this a good project for us.
Good.
To the Chair?
Michael?
Let me ask one more question. Is there not another intersection anywhere on El Camino, somewhere in San Mateo County that's similar enough to this that we can say, we like what they did, we're going to do that? It's already been approved, let's just dust off the plans and use it.
As part of the project, we'll go ahead and look at other locations. Off the top of my head, I'm just scanning, you know, coming down from Daly City all the way down to Colma, going, going to South San Francisco, pretty, pretty bad intersections. El Camino Real has, doesn't really have much to rely on. Going down, you know, going through Berlin Gate, San Mateo, I mean, it's, it's pretty much the same. You've got a four-lane road, a lot of traffic going in, the, you know, the condition of the pavement is not that great, Caltrans is not really allowing or wanting to have a lot of amenities because it would actually reduce the, the level of service if you put any kind of a, you know, facility that, that constricts the roadway. So, we're pretty, pretty much limited. I mean, going even down to San Carlos, all the way to the Woodside, going down past 84, down to Menlo Park, I don't really recall any intersection that actually grabs my attention. We will look at it again, though. But in order for us to be able to work with Caltrans, we have to really think about out-of-the-box strategies to make sure that whatever we propose will be accepted. So, we will have to go back and forth with Caltrans and come up with alternatives that would be acceptable. And we may actually set a stage for something new that other city could copy.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, something that occurred to me during the director's comments, not in the staff report, and I just thought of now, and that is that it's very important for these sorts of pedestrian crossings to, to be engineered and for the city to approve those engineering drawings as part of the construction for liability purposes. You might remember some years ago, there was a very tragic incident on El Camino Real and in another city, fortunately not, not ours, in which the city ended up having to pay a lot of money to a person because the intersection or the, the crossing wasn't specifically delineated. I don't know what the, don't remember the facts of the case specifically, but that's one of the, the reasons why engineering is, is very desirable in these situations to make sure that the city can address any liability claims that come if somebody were to be injured in the, in the crosswalk that's ultimately designed.
Any more discussion or action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruen?
Aye.
Item 11, reported commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening. Comments from councilmembers? Rico?
Okay, I have a couple. One, one thing I wanted to mention, the Community Choice Energy Committee held their first meeting this month and Jimmy Tan and I were there at the meeting and just wanted to share that it sounds like it's going to be a really good program. We had a presentation here on it and the mayor was kind enough to appoint me to the committee and so...
Anytime.
It was actually a really good meeting. I got a lot of good information and I just wanted to remind the public that that is out there. It has the support of all of the cities in the, in the county as well as some other organizations and it's going to allow us to have a, an option to how we choose our energy, whether it's, it's clean energy or affordable energy, we'll have a say in how that's, that's going to be presented to us. And so, if anyone's interested, they could go to the county's website and the URL would be green.smc.gov.org and there's information out there. There's going to be a lot of public participation, so that's, that's out there. The other comment I wanted to make was regarding our water conservation requirements. We, we did pass some rules and I had a little trouble when somebody asked me where to get the information and finding it. And I know it was included in the insert in the bills and so if you have, if you get your, your bills online, you can go online and see that, that notification, but I couldn't find it anywhere on the city's website or the water department's website. So, I was wondering if we could make that a little more accessible to the public.
Yeah, I, I thought that water conservation information was on the homepage. If it's not, we'll make sure that it is and that there's a ready link to the specifics of the regulations and how that's being implemented in San Bruno.
Right. And that's, you know, somebody was asking me what days
What day, yeah, yeah.
I couldn't point them in the right direction.
You should be able to find that pretty easily and if we can't, we'll fix that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good. Anything else?
To the Chair?
Rico?
Two items I wanted to bring up. On April 28th, I had asked just for a update on the Planning Commission vacancy and the application process. I, I didn't see anything unless I overlooked, but if, if with the council's permission, I'd like to see it maybe come on the next agenda so we all can have an update. I know it's been over a year since that resignation was there and I know it was a subcommittee and an app, a new application and it'd be nice to be updated because I was asked again and I didn't, I wasn't certain. Second item is on the consent calendar. It obviously is very clear, it's routine action unless otherwise requested by a council member or staff. It's brought to my attention, it used to say citizen, and that's been removed. So, I'd like to have information and/or unless the council wishes not, to have it brought back as to why that was removed or the theory or the reason and when. It was brought to my attention and I didn't see it, shame on me, but I'd like to understand better why. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, just like to thank the Alliance for doing a nice job with Posey Parade. Still, I think we need a lot more attendance some way, somehow, so I appreciate the efforts they did in kind of changing things just a little bit. The city parkway being closed and a car show and stuff, it was more of a community-type event, but I know, I think Bobby's been working on Bobby Marshall, so he probably has some good ideas for next year. So, it was good, it was a nice day and big crowd, so that was good. Closed session, we had it earlier. This meeting is adjourned to the next council meeting, right here, June 23rd.